So we're back to 8.1, the solar farm update. I've got presented by Christian Benson, manager of the environment and Kate Director Utilities Environment. So hi guys, I see you're here and ready to go. And you have some representatives from Atco joining you, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and are they part of your presentation or just here to answer questions?
The representatives from Atco will be actually providing the presentation and administration and Atco will be available for questions.
All right, so why don't we start with the presentation? And then I don't know if you heard Mr. Vajji's presentation, you might want to have some opportunity to respond to some of those. And then we'll allow council to ask questions and let's do this.
Matt Clark from Atco asked that you share your presentation and then I can start and introduce the group.
Perfect, thank you, Christian. Bear with me one second, I'm just going to share my screen. Okay. Okay, can everyone see my screen here? I'm going to put this on presentation mode, just wanted to make sure if we could see it.
We see just your name, it's a black screen with your name and as you started the screen sharing.
Is it coming here? Apologies.
Okay, we're used to it.
The joys of technical delays here.
Now we see, yeah, we see your PowerPoint, but we see all the
Okay, let me just
So I don't know if you want to put it into, there we go.
Are we good now here?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just stop my video, I'm gonna, you're, you're gonna see the screen. Just so the bandwidth is still there, I feel like it's a little slow right now, but I'm just to ensure.
Sure.
Okay, perfect, so yes, thanks, Christian. My name is Matt Clark. I am with Atco here and I am the PM on this project. I work for our infrastructure and services team as an execution and delivery manager. So with me today, we have Rachel C, who is our lead engineer on the renewables and solar. Chad Baxter, who is our lead engineer for utility interconnection. Nicole Hupka, who is here as our planning, senior planner. And with her focus on environmental and regulatory approvals. And then also with us today, we have Michael Lizinski, I believe, is still, is on the line here, who is with Boost Energy Ventures. And Michael is the principal at Boost there, and he focuses on analytics and software development and primarily around the electrical sector. And they have provided us with a detailed economic analysis and model that we will touch on today. So quickly to outline our presentation here. See if it's, okay, perfect, so quickly to outline our presentation here. We, I want to touch on Akko's capabilities, I know a lot of you might know Akko as a, as a gas company. And I want to touch on this side of Akko. And then I'll touch on one of our projects as well that we've done, just to provide a little quick example there. And then we'll get into the specifics of this project. Site suitability, environmental and regulatory approvals, transmission connections, considerations, design proposal. Energy financing 101, to give you a little idea of how that looks like, and then the cost and economics, which obviously was discussed a little bit prior to us joining this call. So, and then we'll touch on recommendations as well. So when it comes to Akko Infrastructure and Services, a lot of you might know Akko Gas as, or Akko as a gas company, utility company. We also have a strong electrical focus, specifically in Northern Alberta, where we are the utility provider for electricity in significant portions of Northern Alberta. Akko Infrastructure Services, really, my team focuses on customer energy solutions. From wind to solar to cogeneration, we offer a full range of support from feasibility studies to engineering design, construction, commissioning. You name it, we do it. So over the last several years, our focus has been on solar specifically. And rooftop and ground mount solar, and I wanted to highlight a project specifically, Fort Chipewaun. They've been, they were tasked to go off diesel. And so we provided them a solution that was a 2.8 megawatt solar farm plus a 1.7 megawatt hour battery storage. And here's a picture here, I just wanted to give you an idea of what a solar farm looks like. Ground mounted, spacing, size, just to give you a little bit of a perspective there. This project actually recently received the Emerald Award for its environmental leadership excellence in Alberta. So just another little feather in the cap for us as well there. So with this in mind, I want to pass it on to Rachel and really dive into this specific project and the things that we've looked at for St. Albert. And we'll first discuss the site suitability and the criteria that we looked at.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, actually, Matt, before I start, there's a weird box on your presentation on the right. I'm guessing that's the Zoom, it's a Zoom window. If you could move that off the screen, everyone can see it a bit better.
Can you see it now?
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay, interesting.
Oh no, it's gone now.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. So the first thing that we looked at when we, when we were brought onto this project. We developed some site suitability criteria for a potential solar farm. And what you see on the screen here are the seven criteria that we look at when we go and assess different sites. So we were asked to investigate other potential sites as well, in addition to Badger Lands. But the site suitability criteria include site irradiance potential, basically how much, how much solar a site gets, gets depending on where it is in the world. And incorporating weather patterns. There's proximity to distribution system infrastructure. This basically, the further away you are from the distribution system, the more upgrades you're most likely going to have to pay for. Site access for construction, site surface slope, the site, the surface slope for a solar farm, it doesn't have to be completely flat. But you want it to be relatively flat to reduce the amount of grading that you'll need. Site size, you want to install a solar farm or a solar farm that's the biggest that you can afford to achieve economies of scale. Environmental and land use considerations, this basically, there's a lot of regulations and directives and guidelines that we have to follow, and Nicole will go into those in a, in more detail later on in the presentation. And the last one is the opportunity cost for using land for solar PV. So solar PV takes up a lot of valuable real estate. And so you want to make sure that there are potential uses for the land, like farming or other kinds of economic development. It won't bring in, it won't bring in more revenue for the city than a solar farm. So we can go to the next slide. Now, the first site that we looked at was the Lakeview Business District. We, so the first thing that we saw was that it's in close proximity to a named lake, which basically means that you, the, a solar farm has to be more than 1,000 meters away from the lake. And that cuts down on the portion, on the amount of land that we can use. And the other one that we saw immediately was the opportunity cost. I believe the city of St. Albert has plans to develop this land for economic development, which would bring in more revenue for the city. And so we move on to the next site, annexation lands. Annexation lands is basically a large swath of land to the north of the city of St. Albert. And I believe the city gains ownership on January 1st, 2022. So there's a lot of private land in this area. And so to develop a solar farm, there would be lengthy negotiations and it can be quite expensive. Other, other things might include, there could be other economic development opportunities as well on lands in annexation lands. So overall, overall, we think that there's potential to develop a solar farm in annexation lands, but it would require, but there's no preliminary site analysis done. And so it could be a good potential in the future, but as of now, the last site might be the best candidate. And so that brings us to Badger Lands. So Badger Lands has, it's, it has good proximity to the distribution system infrastructure, just because you can see on the bottom left of the picture, it's right next door to a transmission point of delivery, which was, which would be where we connect to the grid. It's got good site access for construction, the site surface slope is decently flat there. In terms of environmental and land use considerations, it is a brownfield site that's owned by the city of St. Albert. Which means that opportunity cost for using the land for other uses would be low due to the fact that there would be heavy remediation required for other land uses. So we determined that Badger Lands is the best candidate for this solar development.
Nicole, do you want to touch on the environmental and regulatory approvals needed for Badger Land?
Can you guys hear me now? Okay, I think I'm good. So good afternoon, everybody. I'll just speak briefly about regulatory requirements and how they apply here in Alberta. So here in Alberta, we have two regulators, the Alberta Utilities Commission and Alberta Environment and Parks. Both have developed guidelines and directives to help guide renewable developers. So let's start with Alberta Environment and Parks. AEP has put out a directive as of 2017, which sets standards and limitations for solar energy developers. And this is regarding both or all planning, construction, operation of those solar facilities. It includes all lands, both private and crown. And it is required for all developments over 1 megawatt. So this project would definitely fall within that because it's at least five plus megawatts. So, and then, but there is an exception, and that exception is urban areas. So anything that's owned and inside of already existing urban areas is exempt in some areas. So we'll kind of discuss that in a minute. So the directive came about because construction, constructing and operating solar energy projects can lead to large habitat loss and fragmentation. So site selection is the first and most critical factor in preventing negative impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitat. So one of the standards, for example, which Rachel mentioned, was, when discussing the Lakeview District lands was that solar PV's developments need to be a minimum of 1,000 meters or 1 kilometer away from any named lake. So that's part of the directive. Citing on brownfield sites or agricultural lands or any other manmade disturbance, which is called anthropogenic disturbances, is better than citing on undisturbed lands. So you know, anything that's sort of previously disturbed is, is definitely preferred in this directive. So for urban areas, AEP generally wants to see a project. So we, we offer them a, a project description through email or a letter. And then they give us some type of reference back or referral. In this case, we would likely, especially for the Badger Lands area, we would likely get a, this is outside of AEP's purview. So then let's look at surveys required. Those surveys would be for one full year, and they would mostly be surrounding bird surveys. Birds are most impacted when it comes to solar facilities. So that's definitely why we want to do our due diligence and make sure that we do bird surveys for one full year. I think this area, because it's so close to urban development, you're not going to see a lot of certain types of birds that they'd be looking for. But, but definitely we want to consider those species. Wetland surveys will also be completed. And then there's also something called a glare study, and this has to be done for every single solar facility that's out there. And that's just part of what comes next, and that's the AUC requirement. So Alberta Utilities Commission, we're completely, every application for an electrical development within this province needs to go through the Alberta Utilities Commission, which is dictated under the rule seven. And this basically tells us as a TFO or a transmission facility operator, what we need to do to get that facility approved. So everything from a project description and engineering components to environmental considerations. And, and of course, participant involvement. So that's the people that are around the area that we need to consult with prior to application. And then part of that rule seven as well is the environmental evaluation, which discusses baseline data for the site and will include an assessment of short term and long term impacts as a result of the solar facility. And I think that's kind of wraps up the environment and regulatory approvals.
Matt?
Awesome, thanks Nicole. Hi, everybody. I'm here to speak to the Transmission and Distribution Interconnection, which of course is one of the most important parts of getting a solar site up and running. And like we've alluded to, the proximity to the facilities owned by Fortis is of particular interest. And it's also pretty exciting for me with Badger Lands. It's right next door to where I grew up in Deer Ridge. So pumped to go up there and see my parents and drive past this nice solar farm. So with the Badger Lands, we're right next to a bunch of Fortis facilities. So we've got all the distribution lines that run through Villeneuve and will, you know, we've seen massive growth in that part of, of St. Albert. So they'll definitely be taking advantage of all the solar generation, and we're right next to the substation. So with Fortis, we have to go through an application process that Atco will aid St. Albert throughout. All the technical requirements for the applications from initial studies and formal studies. And then Fortis will propose basically what they're going to construct to our farm, and then we connect it from there. With the preliminary discussions that I had with a contact at Fortis that I know. He immediately advised us basically to connect a 15 megawatt system rather than a three phased 5 megawatt approach. This will essentially save on two extra interconnection process and approval costs, which, which start getting pretty high when you're, when you're doing three at a time there. So still wanting to go with the 15 megawatt single system. The Alberta Electric System Operator, ISO, they basically oversee all of the transmission and generation electricity in all of Alberta. And they have a secondary process for the application, but that'll be mostly driven by Fortis themselves. ISO will come back to St. Albert and Atco and lay out a certain amount of communication and protection requirements that we'd have to adhere to. But that's no problem, we do that all the time, just like Matt said. We do, we're basically the Fortis, we do all the electricity in Grand Prairie and Fort McMurray and Lloydminster. It's definitely our bread and butter up there. So with that, we would need a certain set of pieces of equipment, which include the 25 kilovolt circuit switching, switchgear, which is the main point of disconnect under any emergency or fault conditions or maintenance conditions. That's the one point, and you can see it there in that first pole in that picture. It's called a recloser, and that's basically, it would shut off the entire site from, from either side. So it'll protect Fortis from any fault that happens on our side, and it'll protect the solar farm from any fault that happens on the Fortis side. With that, there's a little communication box there that'll most likely be run to a little control building for communication. And essentially, we'll need to connect the line to an overhead Fortis line. So again, that's our bread and butter, we're, we're all good with that, that's easy enough for us. But just to make sure that Fortis is actually going to be providing the primary meter, which is going to be doing all the high accuracy measurement of the generation. And all your payment schedules will be based off the readings of that primary meter provided by Fortis. Thanks.
Rachel, back to you on the design.
Okay, so what you see in front of you right now is our preliminary design. The city of St. Albert has indicated that you wanted to develop this in three phases. So I have split it into three different arrays, but this can definitely be developed at the same time as well. So we have a total number, total of 34,350 modules for a total array size of 18.19 megawatt DC. You hear 15 megawatts, and then you see this 18.19 megawatt DC number. The difference between this is that when, is basically the AC is the inverter size and the DC is the size of the modules. The modules aren't producing full power at 24 hours a day. So you typically want to oversize your DC a little bit, just to, just to get some more production from your system. So that's why you, that's why you hear the 15 megawatts and then 18 megawatts DC here. System components include your inverters, which converts the power from the panels into usable AC power. You have your modules, those are the solar panels that collect sunlight and turn it into power. And then the racking as well that supports these panels. So as a part of our phase one report, we provided a brief overview of for the city to see what typical O and M or operations and maintenance requirements are. And they are, the first and foremost is regular performance monitoring. So if anything does go wrong, you catch it immediately and it doesn't affect your performance too much. Number two is vegetation management. And then three, visual inspections, four, module cleaning if necessary. And lastly, thermal imaging and step up transformer oil level temperature checks. Thermal imaging can tell you, can tell you if a module is performing as expected or if, or if it's not performing. The ones that aren't performing, you'll be able to see that they're at a much different temperature than ones that are producing at a normal rate. And so as a part of our phase one report as well, we provided, or we provided a overview of how, how much solar output is expected for the next 25, 30 years. And then you can see here at year one, we're looking at 21,800 megawatt hours. Actually, in 2023, you can see the bar is a little lower, and that's because we're expecting to finish in the first quarter of 2023. So you're not getting a full year's worth of production there, but the full thing should be 21,800 megawatt hours. So that's equivalent to about 25,000 houses for a, or that's, so that can power 25,000 houses for a year. And that's assuming a typical Albertan 800 or 1800 square foot house consuming about 8,900 kilowatt hours per year.
Perfect, so really that leaves us with the financing and economics piece. By now, you're probably starting to wonder, well, how, how, how do we generate revenue from this? Well, typically, most large scale solar producers will use some sort of PPA agreement or can. And that ranges from $55 to $75 per megawatt hour, that those, those outputs that Rachel just talked about. PPA is a power purchase agreement, really, it's a contract to set rate directly with the purchaser, and it's really to hedge the fluctuating electrical prices. There was discussion, obviously, on merchant market price. So power pool price, really, that's selling electricity back to the grid, and it fluctuates significantly. So if you have current rates from, you know, it could be at zero to $99, $999, depending on the time of day. The producers that are online or the consumers that are using that electricity. So a lot of, a lot of solar production will use that PPA to hedge, hedge that. And again, there is a range, and there is a bit of uncertainty with that range. So as, as we go and as people become more reliant on green electricity or push towards more green electricity, then this will fluctuate even further. The other thing I wanted to touch on as well here is, you know, that's one source of revenue generation is from strictly the commodity price. Also from environmental attributes. When we talk about carbon credits, so GHG emissions offset, offsetting carbon intensive grid. The Alberta grid right now is quite carbon intensive, and we expect it to be that way as natural gas is still one of the primary electrical, electrical producers. So what, what that means is that we have an opportunity here with green energy to, green electricity to basically generate some sort of emissions offset that can be sold. And especially as the price of carbon goes up through the government, these offsets will, we anticipate to go up as well. From a distribution credit standpoint as well, this is another form of revenue. Now, recent AUC decisions have actually voted on eliminating this distribution credit within the next five to six years. That being said, it is still something that can be used to generate some sort of revenue in the meantime. And what it is really is, is the utility provider pays for this electricity to be put onto the grid. Now, from an economic standpoint, there's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. Obviously, that capital cost is important. So what we had anticipated, high level plus or minus 30% of a cost of just under $25 million. And this includes the solar panels, the, the inverters, construction commissioning, the interconnection piece, any civil work that needs to happen as well. The average annual revenue can range really, and it will range on that PPA cost, and we discussed that. So in the report, it shows the $69 and also shows the low case of $50 as well. And again, with merchants, the merchant pool price right now is, is the average is $54 per megawatt hour. So that's the average. And the PPA, if we assume a worst case to a best case, you could get in there. Your revenue, your annual revenue can fluctuate significantly. And keeping in mind that your carbon credits, your distribution credits can make up a portion of that, a significant portion of that, to say the least. On the average O and M piece, we estimated $6 per kilowatt. And what that encompasses is everything that Rachel mentioned, the, the performance monitoring, the vegetation management, the inspections. And then you get your simple payback with that around 11, and obviously, a worst case scenario, 17 years. What we didn't include in this was funding, and that was not considered. But there are grant programs in place for these types of projects that make that economic cost less. And, and that wasn't considered at this time for this economic model, but it's something that definitely should be looked at. Finally, with our recommendations, obviously, we touched on the size that we, installing this solar farm at Badger Lands. The financial models indicate a strong payback without funding. You know, it's located adjacent to a transmission pod, POD, sorry, in the substation, so that's also critical as well. And it being a brownfield site with the opportunity to repurpose that, that land, that would take significant remediation if it was used for something else. It's definitely a big bonus as well. From a one phase to three phase installation, we highly recommend the one phase, just for there's significant cost savings on the construction administration piece. Having to do this once over, not three times over. The single interconnection requirement like Chad touched on, Fortis and ASO, if we do that one time, it, it, it quickens the process and allows it to be a lot more efficient that way. And then the simplified O and M, this is a critical piece, as technology changes over the years. You're going to have different inverters, different solar panels, if you can install at one time. You're able to basically ensure that your inverters are the same, your panels are the same. And you don't have to change or, or, or adjust those as, as it goes forward. So obviously, next steps here, you know, you begin the application process, the site prep, soil burns, tree location. And discontinue that Badger Lands, which you've already done. And then I guess the final piece there was on that PPA side of things is, is finalizing that. It is fluid at this time, but it's something that you'd want to finalize over the course of the next little bit here to ensure that that's something that, you know, that, that economics work and it makes sense. So I'll pass it back to Christian at this point. Christian, I'll, I'll move the slide for you there.
Thank you. And so there's a couple of other considerations that administration wanted to add to Akko's presentation. First and foremost, that this project is not unique potentially within St. Albert and within the province. At the point in time we are right now, there's over 35 solar PV farms that are currently completed or in construction between now and 2024 in Alberta. Some of the ones that I've highlighted are Claire's Home, which is 132 megawatts. Strathmore at 40.5 megawatts, and the Traverse Solar Project at an astounding 465 megawatts. In addition to this, there's also precedent in other municipalities owning and operating solar farms, including Innisfail Solar at 25 megawatts. Cardston at 1.9 megawatts, Viking at 1.5 megawatts. And the recently completed Fort Chipewaun project with Three Nations Energy at 2.8 megawatts. Land use, the Badger Land site, it was covered briefly in the presentation, but from council's consideration. The Badger Land site is currently deemed a brownfield site. And due to this, the, you know, due to the former snow melt operations. What that does is unless remediated, the Badger Land will be limited in land use options. is unless remediated, the Badger Land will be limited in land use options. So the benefit of a solar PV farm is that it's a permitted use. And after the 35, 30 to 35 years of operation, the city would retain these lands with potential for remediation with future technologies. And that there's also an added benefit of increased land values over the course of 35 years of the operation of solar PV farm operations. Badger Lands is mentioned by Chad, also has an immediate proximity to a transmission point of delivery substation, which is another major benefit that would reduce overall costs to this project. There's some other potential benefits from a solar PV farm in addition to the financial business case. It also includes things like co-hosting the site as a refuge for native vegetation with pollinators and bees, which is common in Alberta. In addition, there's also an economic benefit that could be realized through the construction process, as well as the creation of secondary industries associated with solar and alternative energy production. Finally, council can make the decision to retain the carbon credits produced by the project if they so choose. Next slide, please. The final slide is the city administration recommendations as produced on the agenda report. Number one is that council received the solar farm update report dated June 21st, 2020 as information. The second recommendation is that project charter ENV 004 is approved for 2.26.1 million to be funded through borrowing bylaw 35, 2021. Thank you back to Matt for a wrap.